We are going to, we have two ordinances that are really kind of opposite of one another. They have different outcomes potentially, but they both involve the same things. So we're going to read both ordinances. So when Lacy comes up to talk, you just be talking about both at the same time. So if you can just read both of those, I appreciate it.
Number two, an ordinance to expand the historic district.
If you'll remember, in December, the council, on December 13th, the council was delivered a report that described the process that we have taken over the last year of a proposed expansion of the Hammond Historic District. Within that report, you received attorney memos that were from Andre Coudrain regarding the overall process for expanding the district and answering critical questions that we uncovered while we were in this process. You received the zoning report from the Zoning Commission's recommendations, their meeting minutes, their map of their expansion area, and the suggested ordinance language to uphold the Zoning Commission's recommendation to deny expansion. The Zoning Commission did, was explicit in terms of if they said, if you went in favor of expanding the district, that they did recommend that Bankers Row be included in that. Also included in your report was the Study Committee report from the members who studied this in detail and looked, did walking tour of the area, and confirmed that at least two-thirds of the structures in the proposed expansion area were contributing in terms of their historical value and in terms of their architectural materials and history. They recommended to approve the expansion. They offered you a map of the expansion area. They felt that there were conflicts between the historic district guidelines and those of the residential preservation district, otherwise known as Bankers Row. And so in their map of the expansion area, they recommended only doing the significant blocks of Adams-Lilly and excluding Bankers Row. Also included in their report were the meeting minutes of the five different meetings that they held. In the fourth section of your report, you received all the city outreach, which were copies of letters from Mayor Pena Pinto to property owners, meeting notices, and survey-response cards. And then in the last section, you received all public comments that have been received by the city with relationship to this proposed expansion. You have with you tonight the final comments that have been received between the last city council meeting and this city council meeting. If you'll remember, between December 13th and this date, each council meeting you have received, I have forwarded you the emails and the comments that we have received, and I've also provided you print comments, copies of those same comments. So tonight, on your spreadsheet is a summary of all the people who have responded, who are property owners. There have been a couple of, three additional people who have responded that are not property owners, and their comments are also included there. So with that said, the first ordinance is to take up the Zoning Commission's recommendation to not expand the district. The second ordinance that you are taking up is an ordinance to expand the district, but to exclude the property at 212 North Chestnut Street.
So we're going, thank you, Lacy. So we're going to extend an offer for citizens to come up and talk, those who are against the expansion, as well as those who are for the expansion. We'll start, I think we're going to try to do three minutes per, per person, and Vice President Beard is going to be the timekeeper for us. And then we're going to limit it to five per side. And if we are able to extend that, because, you know, we're not duplicating comments, then we'll extend that to include more people. We want to give everybody a chance to speak, but obviously we have limitations on time. But we will do our best to let, allow everyone a chance to speak. When you do come forward to speak, please clearly state your name and your address for the records, so that we can, you know, get proper documentation of who's speaking when you come up. So we're going to entertain at this time anybody who is opposing the expansion of the district. Is there anybody in opposition of expanding the district?
I'm Michael Minkus. I live at 408 East Charles Street. I'm here to ask the council to follow the recommendations of the Zoning Commission and to vote no to the, the ordinance to expand the Hammond Historic District. I believe that historic preservation is important, and I believe our city has clearly benefited from the work of the Hammond Historic Commission. I've attended a number of meetings since October 2013, when we started the discussion about including the Adams-Lilly neighborhood. And I have been oppressed by the concern of the commission that has had for the community in which we live. Even though I was initially attracted to the proposal, the biggest problem I see with the expansion is extending the current guidelines and the city business processes into the residential side of the community. Homeownership is more a do-it-yourself environment than the commercial side. Most of the work for businesses is completed using contractors, planned in advance, to be able to hire the right person to do the job. Most homeowners work on a project on their property that's most need of their attention. They may work on one or two projects on a weekend. The current process allows business owners to bring their written plans to the commission on a periodic basis to discuss and approve those plans. Midday meetings work well for businesses, but not for the working homeowner, who will not have the luxury of taking time off from work to present their cases. Homeowners may not even know what is most pressing project when they come, until they evaluate their personal time, finances, material resources, and good weather. I'm not even one of those who decides on Friday night what project I'm going to do on Saturday. The current Historic District Commission design guidelines are also a major concern to me. I have worked in corporate America for most of my life, and am familiar with the use of guidelines to provide managers and committees guidance in making decisions. Although the current document is currently referred to as guideline, it is written more in a format of a policy. It contains the words must and must not over 200 times. The terms that would be included in a guideline would be should or recommended, and those are much harder to find in the document. We are dependent on the Historic Commission to interpret this document to match our personal needs and the needs of our, and our personal property to the larger community. This can be very subjective, and our, and on change depends on the people on the commission. I believe that the diversity of the Adams-Lilly neighborhood will challenge the committee with significantly different views of the residences and what's important to the individual's quality of life. My wife and I bought our house 70 years ago, inside the existing structure of the home that was built in 1914. Over the past 103 years, it's been significantly expanded and updated. It matches our lifestyle, and we love our neighbors. Almost every feature is important to my comfort and living style that's listed in the current, but as, but according to the current design guidelines, you must not have these features. But they are currently in compliance with the city's zoning ordinances. I'm fearful of our future, what this may imply to our living standards, and the ability to maintain our property in the way we would like. Although I'm retired now, I do not want to spend my days asking a commission to be allowed to maintain my house in the way it makes me, to my home. I thank you for not voting to expand the historic district.
Any comments, any questions from the council? Okay. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue on, and we're gonna, we don't have a beeper that goes off when it gets to three minutes, so we'll just like, I'll just give you like a little sign that we're at the three-minute mark, okay?
Perfect.
Please make sure you give us your name and your address for, for, for the record.
Should we say whether or not we're property owners?
I think that's regardless.
We hadn't asked that question. You know, that's an option that you have. You could just state your name and address that you're, with your...
My name is Anthony Notts. I live at 600 East Robert. And having been a resident of Hammond for over 15 years, I too value the work the historical district has completed with the commercial side of downtown Hammond. However, simply put, these guidelines are not relevant for our residents in the Adams-Lilly neighborhood. I have attended many of these meetings, read and conducted a lot of research on this topic before making this decision. I urge the council to vote against this expansion and the guidelines and regulations that will increase the cost of repairs for our neighbors. The process of seeking additional permission for home repairs is not conducive for the working residents of our community. Thus, these regulations will limit the amount of work and improvements we can do to beautify our homes and neighborhoods. It is our plan, along with the plan of many of our neighbors, to make our homes more energy-efficient over time. Mr. Minkus, when he purchased his home, his first energy bill was over $400 a month. And after replacing the windows for sustainability, they've drastically reduced this to a more affordable cost. Replacement windows are a hot topic when it comes to historical districts. So here's a cost analysis based on a recent quote, which you have copies of, from a New Orleans-based company. As you can see from the quotes, the cost of new energy-efficient windows are over $764 greater per window versus those in the historical guidelines. While some of the people here may advocate that this district have the, they may have the resources to pay these differences, there are many people here who do not have the resources and limitations to pay these additional costs. There are even smaller items which eventually need to be replaced, like banister windows, which you also see. These spindles that are listed on many homes are also very much an increased cost. Another example for you, $18.54 to comply with the banister windows versus $3.59. How do you expect to pass these guidelines for our neighborhood, which will improve a greater financial guideline and obligation? These are just two examples of many different things that our neighbors will pass, or feature, should you pass these guidelines. The affordability and displacement is bound up with gentrification. There's research on both sides of the argument, but please be reminded that while tax credits exist, you must spend more than $10,000. So again, we're going back to those who have the resources and those that do not. There's a lot of research, according to Ball State University, Dr. Francis Parker. They conducted a research to determine if historical preservation districts would increase the assessed values of properties located in their district. Their results show that their assumptions were incorrect. The data and analysis did not produce any solid compelling results. The data will also show true that imposing a historical district will not increase your property values, and in some case, cause the property to increase at the same rate or less than those in the other rest of the city. So finally, put yourself in our shoes. If this was your home, if this were your property, would you want these restrictions? I strongly urge you to vote no. We can do better than this. We will do better than this, and we must meet in the middle for a compromise on this matter. Thank you.
I know you, but you still have to state your name and your...
That's fine. I'm Jennifer White. I'm at 601 East Charles Street, and I am the owner of that property. I want to echo the sentiments of those who have spoken before me and encourage you to follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and vote not to include Adams-Lilly. My husband and I have worked very hard to be able to purchase our home in the summer of 2014, and we've been very involved in this process since then. We very strongly value the character of our neighborhood and the history of the city of Hammond in its entirety. The fact, in fact, the character of our home is part of the reason that we purchased it. However, we do not believe that being included in the historic district is the right way to continue preserving that neighborhood. I, along with multiple other neighbors, have spent time talking with the Adams-Lilly residents about this potential expansion. Many of our neighbors unfortunately did not respond to the city's postcard last year, so we've attempted to talk to even more folks to help make them aware of this upcoming decision. In talking with these neighbors, we've collected the signatures of additional homeowners who are opposed to the expansion. We've provided you with an updated map reflecting those oppositions, as well as a petition bearing the signature, showing that nearly 50% of responding homeowners are opposed to this expansion. I know I speak for many neighbors here when I say that we love the history and the character of Hammond, and particularly of our homes. We have no desire to see this history lost. I want you to know that voting against the expansion of the historic district does not mean that preservation won't occur. We continue to be willing to come together as a neighborhood and work out a set of guidelines that preserve our neighborhood, as well as something that everyone is comfortable with. This scenario would be a win-win for everyone involved. The character and history of our neighborhood would be preserved, and all those who are affected would be happy as they were a part of this transition. I urge you to vote not to include Adams-Lilly. Unfortunately, this whole process has an unintended effect and is dividing our neighborhood. I would ask that you allow us, as a neighborhood, to come together and make the decisions that we are all happy with to preserve our neighborhood. How would you personally feel if this was your home that was being affected? What if you had purchased your home knowing that it needed renovations, and now you're being told that you need to seek approval for every weekend project that you want to do? What if you were like many of us, who don't have the money to renovate the home that you love and worked so hard to get to the standards of the historic district? This decision should not be taken lightly, and your vote should not be cast based on politics. I have, it will have dramatic effects on the homes that we have worked so hard to purchase and to keep beautiful. If this expansion is approved, then the divide that has been created in our neighborhood will only continue. Of all of the places we have, we could have purchased a home, we chose here. We chose this neighborhood. We want to live here. We want to raise our children here. These are the streets, the houses, the oak trees that we want to see when we sit on our front porch after a long day at work. We want to see our neighborhood preserved and maintained, so please, I urge you to vote to allow us to do that. Let us come to a compromise and make the decisions for our neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Greg Drewd. I live at 1500 University Drive in Hammond. I do not own in this neighborhood, but I have sold property in this neighborhood for the last 25 years. I have come in front of this board multiple times to try to get rezoning done, or different things that needed to be done in the neighborhood. One of the examples is 20 years ago, there's a piece of property all the way down here at the end of Charles Street that was owned by a family that wanted to sell the property, and in order to do it, we really needed to break it up. We were going to go B1 on Thomas Street, which is a one-lane highway, and go from R5 to R11 on Charles Street and do two big lots. And I was up at this committee for two years trying to get that done. And the neighborhood was against it. They fought me. They booed me when I came up here. And when it was all said and done, the owners decided that they were going to break it up into 50-foot lots, which it was zoned for, because it was R5. At that point, everything was given to them that they wanted. It went B1 on Thomas. It went R11 on Charles Street. The property is still empty. It's still there. Belongs to that gentleman right there. This house, I didn't want to go take a picture of somebody else's house, so this is my house on College. It will fall plainly within the constructs of this ordinance. It is 64 years old. It is a ranch. When I bought it, I bought it to tear down, because the land was worth more than what the house was. And if my house were within this district, I couldn't go in and tear that house down. And you've taken a piece of property that's worth $200,000 to $250,000 and turned it into a $150,000 house, because I couldn't do what I wanted to with it, and nobody could tear it down. All you could do was what was approved by the historic district. I'm not telling you that this is a good thing or a bad thing. I don't know. But I can tell you that you're opening up a can of worms, and there will be people that will use this to whatever political agenda they have, whatever reason they have. And I know that people believe in this neighborhood. They live here. They want it protected. But this is so broad in the way that it's written, you're going to be drawing property into it that really shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition of the expansion?
Jenny Wilson. I own property at 720 East Charles Street. And I am on what they call the Bankers Row. And I just want to express that I don't want to be in the historic district, that the preservation district has tied my hands at this point to be able to do things, subdivide, sell, rebuild. It tells me how I can and can't do. And I know there's been talk of swapping out one for the other, preservation for historic. And at this point, I don't want anybody to tell me what to do with my property. I want to be excluded from both, if I had a choice. I know Ms. Burlison had expressed her opinion at the time of the preservation district adoption, and she just expressed that she didn't want to be in it, and she didn't get to be in it. And now she has also expressed that she didn't want to be in the historic district, and she's pretty much granted that, that right not to be in it. So I just want to express my opinion, not to be in it, and I hope that I'm not in it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Mr. President, I do have a question. And I'm not sure how, Andre, you may know, how was one property excluded? Because I didn't think that that could happen.
That was just a request to prepare the ordinance, that that one property be excluded.
But why?
Can you clarify?
But why?
Can we just beg a request to be excluded, too?
Yeah. Why not?
I was asked by a council member to prepare an ordinance that would expand the district and that that property be excluded, and that's what's on the table.
Well, we would all like that. We'd say it all.
Excuse me. You have to, you have to, if you want to, if you want to speak, you have to come to the podium. So let me, let me expound on that, please. So I think that initially, there was some, some conversation that, for this particular property, and I think that there was a letter written to the homeowner granting them authorization to not be a part of the, of the district. So that letter came from the administration.
That's incorrect. That, that letter said it was recommended by the study committee. It was not authorization to do that.
So, so the letter, there was a letter that was written, and the letter was, and I'm speaking, so if you need to speak, you can ask me, and then I'd like to give you a chance to respond, okay? But so, because I just want to make sure that we cover that. So there was a letter written, and you have, I don't know, I don't have a copy of the letter, but I think, do you have a copy of the letter, Andre? Did you, did you see that? So this letter, it says, it was written to John and Lucille Burlison at 212 North Chestnut Street. I think that's the, probably you're referring to. It was written on August 8th, 2016, and it says, "Currently, there is an effort to expand the existing Hammond Historic District so that it includes the Adams-Lilly neighborhood. This effort began with property owners in the area calling for such an expansion. You are receiving this letter because your property at 212 North Chestnut Street has been excluded from, from this expansion by the study committee," which is the point that Lacy was making. The city council and the state makes the final decision regarding the expansion and its boundaries. And then it goes on to say some other stuff, and that letter was sent to John and Lucille from the mayor, mayor on August 8th. So that's what I was referring to. So to correct, Lacy is correcting what she said, that the, the underlying point is that the letter says that you are receiving this letter because your property at 212 North Chestnut has been excluded from the expansion of the study committee. So when I read the letter, and when we were doing the ordinance to, to give both ordinances, with this letter in hand, we made the decision to make sure that we adhere to this letter when we wrote the ordinance. So that's where that, that's where that happened. Okay.
May I clarify?
So, yes, go ahead.
May I clarify, since that letter came from city administration?
What came from the mayor? Is it the mayor? Do you want to comment on it?
No, I mean, it's very clear.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
There were multiple letters that were sent that same way.
I mean, I'm answering the question coming from the floor regarding this property at 212. I just read the letter and pretty much, I mean, and the mayor just said it's pretty cut and dry.
Right, it's cut and dry, saying that she's not excluded, it's up to...
Right, it says that, it says, the letter says, "You are receiving this letter because your property at 212 North Chestnut has been excluded from the expansion by the study committee."
By the study committee. And then it was added back at the next meeting.
Okay, so...
And that was the final report that is included in the report that was provided to the council.
So that's, that, that answers the question as to why we did that. Okay?
Mr. President, may I make a point of order? Mr. Coudrain, can you clarify for us the information that has been debated many times that you spoke about on the jack-o'-lantern process and excluding? And I think you even said at one meeting that you cannot specifically exclude one property. Can you elaborate on the legality of that process, please?
Well, I'm not going to address in, in specifics, but in general, there needs to be a reason why a property is excluded, if, if you have an area. Generally, you know, the boundaries of an historic district should not be arbitrary or based on political decisions, right? A district should not be a fraction of a neighborhood. It should be, constitute a cohesive and distinct area of the city. Now, if the council chooses to exclude a property from that, there needs to be a reason for that exclusion. The sole reason can't be somebody wants to be excluded. There's got to be a reason, articulated reason for exclusion of a property.
So, Mr. President, what is the clear reason, other than the back and forth that the study group originally proposed?
And that is, that is the reason that we are authorizing that in that ordinance. And that's, that has to be voted on by the council. So that's the language in the ordinance, and we'll be, we'll decide that when we vote tonight.
Another question from Mr. Coudrain. This, this debate has been going back and forth, and originally, this was proposed not to include Bankers Row, and is passed as such by the historical district. It was later then brought without Bankers Row to the planning and zoning. Am I correct? Without the Bankers Row piece?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
And then from there, at what point has the Bankers Row addition been now added back in? It seems...
Under, yeah, under legislation, the council has the ability to adopt the recommendation or reject the recommendation, amend it, clarify it, or send it back. So at this point, the council really has the decision to decide, expand it, not expand it, expand it this way, expand it that way, or send it back for further review.
Right. And that would be through the process of amendments, if necessary.
So can there, can you take amendments on this motion tonight?
Well, from the council.
Are you willing to...
We, we, that's the, that's the process of the, that goes with the process. So yeah, that, if there's an amendment to be offered on any ordinance, then we obviously will go through the normal protocol and do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the, on the opposition? Okay, we're going to entertain any, any citizens in the audience that wants to talk for the expansion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Hawley. I'm at 604 East Robert, within the proposed historic district. I'm going to take the long ball here for a minute and just talk to you about what historic districts are all about. Because I was on the first commission in 1978, when the historic district was formed in Hammond. Lot of things were depressed, I guess is the best way to say it. Urban sprawl had gone, had, had fit in, and, and things were not doing well in downtown Hammond. This government created that district. They had the vision to do that. And from '78 through the '80s, it was kind of a tough road to hoe. As a, as a commission member and as a seven-year chairman, we caught it. We caught a lot of opposition, a lot of people who didn't want to have it, didn't like it. But you know what? There's an interesting story behind all that. The most verbal opponent ultimately became a member of the Historic District Commission, because he realized the value. I, I own property in the historic district, and I have seen the value of property increase tremendously. So the, the argument that there is no value is, is, in my mind, not, not fulfilled. So where are we today? We're, we're here trying to expand this, this district and, and, and keep things in a, in a manner that people from outside our area can, can be proud of, and we can also be proud of. We, I get a lot of people from other areas who visit Hammond, and they are always astounded by what downtown is all about. And this is merely and simply an expansion of that. I've heard some opposition today that talks a lot about... I've heard some opposition today that talks a lot about the commission and how difficult they may or may not be. I can tell you, the commission is here to be of assistance. They treat every property individually, and they help people do the things that they need to do. As to the weekend, I'm going to do this work, maintenance is not part of this. If it's all maintenance, it's just maintenance. It's not, but if it's a change in the architectural character, then it has to go before the commission. And I think that's good for the whole community, not just the individual property owners. You know, we're only temporary stewards of these properties that we own. They're going to be here long, they were here before we got here, they're going to be here long after. And I think it's important that we take that long-ball approach, understanding what it means to live in a historic community. This is the oldest downtown area, I mean, neighborhood in the downtown, in the city. So it's, I think it's important to protect, and protect as a resource. The commission is not a hindrance. They've been a help. They get people out of trouble, having to do with things that make happen. So I urge you to support the ordinance.
With your experience and being with the historic board in the past, is there a difference, or could there be adjustments made? Is there a difference between a commercial historic and a residential historic?
I would, well, first of all, the guidelines themselves treat houses different than commercial buildings. And they are guidelines, and they do treat every property individually. So I would tell you, it's already built in. Work with the commission, and if you have, you'll understand how they work. And it's very helpful.
So you would suggest it stays as it is?
I do.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak on behalf of the, just please state your name and your address?
Yes. Maria McClellan, 309 North Holly Street, and I'm within the proposed historic district. I'm a real estate broker. We purchased our home after Katrina for its aesthetic qualities, character, workmanship, value, and location. We have a 119-year-old Victorian. These five components that I just mentioned are intrinsically scarce and unique in the residential real estate world, as master-planned communities define the industry and pop up in large blocks almost overnight. Why? Because of the return on investment to developers and contractors due to the volume, low land, and construction costs. They are effectively mass-produced. We have something here that cannot be replicated or duplicated, as the craftsmanship and cost of materials outweigh the ROI to the developer. We have effectively become a nuisance. Historic buildings tell us who we are and where we come from. Statistically, they prove out that local historic districts enhance property values. Results from the Mayberry Report of 2007 shows that property values in local historic districts appreciate significantly faster than the market as a whole, and appreciate at rates equivalent to a market, a regular market, in a downturn. Newer properties within this historic district benefit also, just as much older properties, suggesting an overall 5% to 35% per decade increase in property values over values that are in undesignated neighborhoods. Okay. If you look at the mission statement of the historic commission, you're going to see two words in there: economic development. That's what everybody is striving for today, especially in our state because of the way conditions are. This is all about economic development. I'm going to take an overhead view at this point. Simply put, by creating this organized designated neighborhood status, we have satisfied one of the many attractions in becoming a certified retirement community, which is administered by the lieutenant governor's office, and further, which is administered by the lieutenant governor's office, and further positioning Hammond to create a new economic development funnel, or mailbox economy, where a retiree household is equivalent to 3.7 factory jobs. Did you hear what I said there? Yeah. This is not my numbers, this comes from the state. So a retiree household is equivalent to 3.7 factory jobs. This is unprecedented. Where am I going with this? Louisiana is one of six states within this program, of which Mississippi has the largest. Mississippi currently has 21 certified retirement communities, with Macomb being the closest one. The states are Louisiana, Mississippi, Texas, West Virginia, Tennessee, and North Carolina. Currently, there are 10, currently, there are five certified retirement communities in Louisiana: Covington, Crowley, Lake Charles, Thibodeaux, and the entire parish of Natchitoches. Only two of these have four-year universities. None of them have three major interstates flowing through the city, and you know the rest of the reason. Louisiana is one of 10 states, five of which, five of which are in the South, with the most tax-friendly states for retirees. Retirees are defined as 55 and older, and there are 76 million in population coming on board. The bottom line is, we need a new economic development driver, and I think becoming a certified retirement community for Hammond by using the historic district would benefit us all. Thank you very much.
Any comments from the council? Any questions?
Good evening. I'm Pat McAlusa. I live at 701 East Charles Street. I would like to just speak to the friendliness and the way that the commission is set up, and the way that you use the commission when you're a part of a program like this. I own property in the Adams-Lilly neighborhood, and we also own property downtown Hammond. And I've had occasion to come before the commission on numerous occasions. And I will have to tell you that it has been a, even though it is a process, and it does take a little time, it has been a very easy process. And I've found that the commission tries to work with the property owner to solve problems. If something that I bring to the commission isn't exactly like it's supposed to be, or doesn't completely follow the guidelines, they've been over backwards to try to guide me in the right direction. And I've been in the meetings when they've helped people find alternative products or alternative methods for achieving their goals. So I really feel like the people who haven't had this experience find it a little daunting to say that they have to come before a commission to get approval. But I just, I want everyone in this room to know that it is not a difficult task, and the commission works tirelessly to try to find solutions to problems. They're not there to block you. They're there to find solutions. So I just think that those that haven't experienced it might, are using that as an excuse to say that they don't want to be in it, but they don't really know how it works. Thank you.
All right. We've had three so far. So, Tom, you want to talk?
Yes, my name's Tom Anderson. I'm a property owner and reside at 706 East Charles Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, first, I'd like to say that Guy Ricotta, see here? He was here. I can't see. There he is, okay. The Guy Ricotta and I have enjoyed the privilege of growing up next to where the founder of Hammond, Peter Hammond, and his family are buried. And now, Ron and Pat McAlusa, and Donna Gay and I get to live on property where Peter Hammond actually lived. Now, our neighborhood has a very rich history, contained not only in historic homes, but one, as of one, that has had welcoming and friendly neighbors for over many generations of time. And this night, this city council has the unique opportunity to make a statement of preserving not only our past, but to ensure the quality of life that will enrich our future. The live oaks in our neighborhood that we continue to protect were here far before this country was even explored. Many of the homes have been here for six generations. My father's family moved into this neighborhood in the early 1900s, and since then, five generations of Andersons have lived in that neighborhood. The house where my wife and I live was built before any of my ancestors ever came to Louisiana. And I remember my dad telling me, when he was a little boy, that he had to walk from his house a block over to the yard where I live now, where his neighbors had a milk cow, and milked the cow, and bring home for his newborn baby brother, so he'd have milk to drink in the house. And while you've heard the passions of our friends here, and pleas from both sides, it is important for all to acknowledge that regardless of whether or not we live in a historic district, the fact will remain, we will remain friends, and the kind of friends who will love and respect one another after this is all done. It was only in the past New Year's Eve Eve, only just over a month ago, that my wife, Donna Gay, and I hosted a wedding in our yard for our neighbors. And most of the opponents to this expansion district, including the married couple, you know, were in attendance. And Donna Gay and I burst forth in joy as we witnessed this benchmark wedding taking place under the mossy arms of Peter Hammond's magnificent hitching oak. Ladies and gentlemen, it's our sincere hope that this city council will cast tonight a unanimous historic vote, just as the historic district commission, study commission unanimously recommended the expansion of this district. And we'll approve of Hammond's historic district as a very first expansion that will alas include the oldest neighborhood where Peter Hammond's family lived, worked, and is buried. Then we too shall reap the same benefits as the downtown Hammond Historic District has, which enables our community to thrive and flourish in preserving our rich heritage and our rich history. And I thank you for your attention. And, Mr. President, if I may, at this time, ask those owners of property in the district who are in support to please stand so that they can be recognized and accounted for at this time, if you will. Standing, would you come forward into the middle of the aisle, just so the council will know? And in addition to those that are standing, or hold your hands up if you're on the sides, I would like to offer, introduce, as part of this hearing, four additional affidavits of people that own property in the district that are in support of it, who are not here because of health reasons or work jobs.
All right, thank you. Out of fairness to the audience, if those persons who are opposed to the expansion would like to stand, you're more than welcome to as well.
Owners?
I'm sorry. I mean, if you're in the audience and you're opposed to the expansion, you can stand.
As an owner.
As an owner. Well, I'm making that decision from the chair. We're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to deal with, we're going to see that, and obviously, the council can see that, okay? All right, thanks. We want to give everybody a chance to stand, and, you know, we didn't really stipulate that on the other side, so we'll leave that alone, okay? All right, anybody else who is speaking for the expansion?
Good evening. I'm Patty Pitzer. I live at 210 North Holly. My husband and I have been a property owner for 20 years. I, in past career, worked as a member of the Main Street Program Coordinator, State Coordinator, and I also worked as part of the Division for Historic Preservation. I'd like to speak to any concerns about the guidelines, and point out that the historic guidelines were recently updated, rewritten, under a grant by a very fine lady, graduate of Tulane. And she incorporated not only commercial properties as we had before, but she also addressed the residential. And in working with historic district commissions for five years, and helping them write their guidelines, and helping train commission members, I consider those guidelines to be some of the finest I've ever seen. They certainly adhere to the historic trust for preservation's suggestions and recommendations, and I think they would serve our neighborhood very well, as well as downtown.
Anybody else? Is that fine? Is that fine? Okay, so we reached a, does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the historic district? So we're going, we've exceeded our five? Okay, so we'll offer up one more person to speak on the other side.
Ron McAlusa, 701 East Charles Street. I don't envy your position here tonight. This has been an issue that has been boiling around in the community. And I am for the district, and I want to say that upfront. I do want to say, though, that I'm truly impressed by the sincerity and the comments of those that were made against the ordinance. And I understand your trepidation that you may have and your concern. Nobody wants to be bothered with things that are, get in the way of their life, or their property, or their family. I understand that. But I can attest with my gray hair that I've been around for a while, and I have lived in that neighborhood for a long time. I, like Michael Hawley, have seen what the historic district has done to downtown. And I suggest to my friends and my neighbors that it's not as daunting as it may seem. And without anybody's authority, other than my own idea, which does not necessarily give it any credibility, I would suggest that maybe there's a legitimate compromise. What if the ordinance had a sunset provision of two years? I would suggest, where it gets passed, and then let's see how it works. The comment has been made by my wife, which I would attest to be invalid, no matter what she said, but the point is well-made. It seems more difficult than what it is to process an application through the historic district commission. This would be a learning process for all of the interests. Number one, for the community. I hear reservations about how difficult it's going to be. Having experienced it, it's not really that difficult. Does that mean that their anxiety is any less? No. But the reality of it has not been established. Is this a new challenge for the historic district in terms of having a large residential area? Yes. So maybe they'll have to change. Maybe instead of having meetings just during the day, they'll have to have one or two of them at night. There are compromises here. Let's put it into effect. Let's try it for two years. If the complaints are there, it's dead. Don't renew it. But if it works, if it's not as difficult, if it's not as scary as what it may seem, then we can adapt to resolve what those issues are, because it does work. It worked for downtown Hammond. It can work in our neighborhood. It's about a community. This is a community issue. You represent the city of Hammond. You don't represent me individually. What is best for the city of Hammond? So let's see if we can make it work to satisfy, you heard this young lady say, "Let's compromise. Let's see if we could work out a compromise." And then we hear that these are the best regulations that are out there? Let's try it. The compromise can come when you use it. You cannot work out problems when there only something in somebody's mind. So let's try it. How about that? I don't know if I'm going to get any support for that or not. Might I get out the building? But if, if, maybe. But if you're looking for a way, as leaders that have to cast a vote, you're faced now with what this is, is either yes or no. It's either going to work, or it's not going to work. Well, let's see if we can get the parties together and work this out. Just a suggestion, it'd be up to the council to decide. But thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
But thank you for your time, and I'm really pleased to see this many people of Hammond interested in our community. This is a positive thing, no matter which way the vote goes. Thank you.
All right, so we did, we did go beyond the five on the pro side with homeowners, so, and we did have another homeowner, property owner in the area to speak, so if there is another property owner in the area who wants to speak in opposition of the ordinance, I'll entertain that at this time.
I have a question for the administration.
You can come up to the podium.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have a question for the administration.
Can you repeat his name again, please? You got it?
Thank you. Ms. Lacy, a lot of the information and conversations tonight have been focused on owners of property. Has there been any communication from the city administration, historical guidelines to any renters or leases of any of the properties?
No.
Okay. And I want to read you part of the enforcement regulations as listed in the Hammond Guidelines. It says, "Any owner, agent, lesee, or other person acting for or in conjunction with him who shall violate ordinances of law or rules, regulations, or decisions of the Historical District Commission shall for each offense be fined not less than $50, not more than $100, or suffer imprisonment for not more than 30 days, or both fine and imprisonment. Any owner, agent, lesee, or other person acting for in conjunction with him who shall demolish a structure or edifice without having been issued a certificate of appropriateness shall be fined a single fine of not less than $1,000." So from what I understand, this does include leases, based on the enforcement part of this, yet no communication has been sent from the city on any renters or persons who are renting property from, in this district, proposed. Is that correct?
There were no direct letters sent to anyone who was a rental owner. We used the Tang Bahoe Assessor's website with their ownership listed, and so it went to the owners of the properties. There were public hearing notices placed in the council record up there and also in the newspaper. This was publicized several times, but there was no direct correspondence sent to renters.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any comments from the council before we move on?
Are we finished, Pro and Con? Is there any room in the middle? Ron was the only middle, and I appreciate the middle. My name is Melanie Ricketts, I'm the Acting Administrative Officer for the current Hammond Historic District, and I just wanted to clarify some-
Can you give us your address, probably, please?
My address is 607 Joe Ferris Drive. And I spend most of my time at 312 East Charles these days, but, which is right here, I'll be back here in the morning. If anybody wants to come to a Historic District Commission meeting to see what it's all about, we have one tomorrow at 11:00. But there have been a couple of things that have been, have come up this morning that I want to clarify. Well, see, it's not morning anymore, that's how much I've been here. One of the things I wanted to clarify, preservation in the Historic District Commission does not regulate use. I think Mr. Drew was talking about some property at the end of Charles Street that couldn't be separated, and couldn't be sold, and couldn't be demolished. Those are things that are regulated actually by the Residential Preservation District, not by the Historic District Commission. The Historic District is really just based on the integrity of historic materials and historic structures, not use, not oak trees, not, you know, milk cows, any of that stuff. It's really just about the building. So there aren't any uses that are being regulated based on the Historic District Commission guidelines, for the most part. Those are planning and zoning things. And I think there's been a lot of back and forth about that, then I want to make sure that we're clear. Also, one of the questions I had with the Study Committee, one of the things with the Residential Preservation District, there was also some conflict with the current Historic District Guidelines and the Residential Preservation District. There are some things in those, in the Residential Preservation District that are in conflict, and that was one of the things that the Study Committee and Historic District Commission asked to be resolved. And I do think that those things need to be resolved first. How many people here live on Bankers Row and Charles Street? So those are properties that, right now, based on the Residential Preservation District, are in conflict with the guidelines, and I do think that that needs to be resolved first. One of the other things that I think that we really need to keep in mind, and it's very important to me, is when you increase the number of properties that the Historic District Commission will be reviewing, that also affects the office.
Yes.
Right now, we are a one-person team, and it's me, and my job is a contract position, it's a part-time position, I already exceed that, and I think that we really need to look at what that will look like as far as increased hours, time. And I know that there have been some suggestions of having the process online and having computer, more computerized things. There isn't an algorithm that can read an application, read the guidelines, and decide if that's compliant. That was something that would still have to be done manually, and it would be still done by one person. So that's something else. I also wanted to point out that we've never imprisoned anyone. I'm still looking forward to that. There are people that I would choose first, but, and when it gets to the point that we have find, I can think of two people that we've found in the entire time that I've been here, and it was blatant non-compliance. I've also, with the applications, the commission really is a resource, and if you look online, you can find, you know, 10 different, you know, facts about the cost. There are things that are not cost prohibitive in the long run. There aren't any additional costs to, we're not asking people to make their properties pretty. It's not the pretty committee, and it's not about making things look perfect, it's about just retaining the architectural and historic integrity that has existed. It's not about creating something else. It's not about requiring people to make their property look a certain way, it's about just maintaining those things. So those were some of the things that came up that I thought we needed to address as far as we go forward with the, with your decision.
Thank you for taking all that into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from any of the council members?
Sure.
Questions?
Sure.
And Melanie, maybe can help with this. I don't, I don't know where this map came from, if this is an official map or not, with the yellow on it.
That one came from one of the homeowners.
Yeah, I think, because, and maybe somebody can enlighten me. I've been looking, and this yellow, it looks like this building is excluded. In the yellow, does that mean it's excluded?
It's not.
Who, 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 who presented the map to, to the council? Would you come on up and answer Councilman Hood's question?
Sure, sir. The yellow properties are, properties that are owned by the city, so therefore a vote cannot be taken on unless the city is willing to speak on those behalf.
So I would, my point is, I guess, if we're not included or not, I would think I'm sitting in this building, it looks kinda historic to me.
No, no, we would be included.
Okay, so, so this building would be included in the proposed-
Right, and so with the permit officer.
I think what he was saying was those yellows marked are not a part of the vote. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
So the, so he was saying that they did not vote on those because those were city properties. That's all I remember.
But are we included now? Is this building included now because it's not on this map?
Not now.
Not now?
Not right now, in the Historic District.
Okay. So my point is-
You're included in the proposed expansion. This building, this building and the permit officer both included in the proposed expansion.
Okay, this, this map's different.
They rendered their opinion, is what they-
I'm sorry?
They didn't render their opinion for con.
Well, I just think if we, this building is historic, and if the city is gonna expect other people to follow in line, then we should lead by example. And then the only other comment that I have, I don't have an opinion either way, however, I would just tell you that I saw 10 people stand up or more that are in opposition, so I don't know that I can support this excluding one person. I just won't have the opportunity to say that before we take our vote, so I don't know that it's fair to the other people that we just exclude one property, so I want that on the record.
Mr. President?
Yes?
First of all, I want to say that this, in 10 years that I've been on the council, is one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make. And we've had some doozies. And I've tried, I've met with both sides, I've met, I've had lunch with an architect, I've spoken to any number of people, and really tried to come to the best decision, and at the end of the night, when I go to bed, I feel good about it. Now, and I'll respect Mr. Holly, and let me say that, I love, I love downtown, and every time Ken Benita sticks a mic in front of my face, I tell him that. And I think it's the work of Tom Anderson and Mary Zatteran, and the people that started that commission, that, the Historic Commission, that made sure we kept that downtown. Having said that, I did speak to two different architects, and Mr. Holly, I have all due respect to you, their opinion was that the guidelines should be a little different when it comes to commercial and residential. That was their opinion, not mine. They are, okay.
They are.
I'm just, I'm just expressing their opinion. The other thing that is very concerning to me, and if I had my way, I would like to see this process delayed until we hired a director, because right, when Melanie leaves, we have no director, and she is currently part-time, as she said. So if we're gonna hire a director to oversee the commission, maybe, hopefully, that person would be, first of all, I think they're gonna have to be full-time, because we expanded the district by 90 properties if this passes. Second, I think it would be incumbent upon us to get their input into the process, not that, that, that person would be any smarter than anybody else in this room. The biggest concern I have is, is I spoke to two commissioners yesterday who were adamantly against this, and asked me to vote no. And so if two of the commissioners that are charged with overseeing this process are saying, "We can't handle this right now, please vote no," that is a very big concern. I would love to see this process delayed, I know it's been worked on, and, but, and I really, I have friends on both sides, and I know how I vote, I'm gonna have people disappointed, and I hate that the neighborhood is divided. Mary Zatteran had a long conversation, and that was her opinion. She said, "I hate, Mike, that we're divided." So if this process can be delayed, where the neighbors could come together and try to compromise, then, you know, everyone has my guarantee that I'll keep an open mind. But those are my concerns right now, is if commissioners are not comfortable with this passing, then that's a, that's a big red flag to me.
Mr. Williams, just go up.
Come, Melanie, just come to the podium, please.
I understand why you would want to wait until we have a new person, but I think that not knowing how many properties they'll be regulating, it would be hard for them to have input in that process. And also, in hiring someone, we would need to know what their, the scope of their work is gonna be before, so we aren't offering somebody something and then changing it midstream. So I understand where you're coming from, but the other way, we, and also, the person's gonna have a very big learning curve, and it might be something that would be overwhelming.
Thank you. Maybe we can convince you to stay. All right, Councilman, Councilman Bier, any comments? Councilman, Councilman Blunt? Okay, we're going to, you wanna speak?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay, come on up. This is the last person.
Since I was brought up, I figured I should probably come up and speak.
Are you in the middle, or you are?
Well, I am on, we are-
She's in the middle?
They're telling me where I am.
Oh, you're in the middle.
I'm Mary Ann Calle, 412 East Charles Street. And so I think part of what, and being the people who Tom and Donna Gay did allow to get married-
Oh, you had the wedding.
Yes, we're the wedding. So I figured I should come up and talk. And I'll be honest, Marie and I waited a long time, a very long time, until we chose, because we felt like we needed to choose a side. And we've met with most of the people, if you look on the opposing side, if you look at the age group of these people, if you look at when they've purchased, I've been living in this neighborhood for 23 years. I love the historic part. Peter Hammond's grave is two houses down from me. And so, and it was an honor to get married and to be a part of this community. But I will tell you, if you listen to both sides, the interpretation of the guidelines is very, is very confusing. And if you vote in favor, and if that's what you vote, we're gonna comply. My point is, whoever's gonna do the education is gonna need to be very intentional, and is gonna need to spend a lot of time with the members of our community, educating us as to what it really means. It's not about preservation, we get the preservation part. It's about what does that mean and where's the responsibility for the homeowner? So that's all I'm saying, is that please build in, if it is voted in favor of, please build in somewhere that somebody's gonna work with us to make sure that we understand what it means. So these people are not against preserving this area, it's about really understanding the cost factor, and there is a cost factor when you start looking at it. So I'm just, I'm just asking for the education piece to be included.
You are, yes.
I voted no, but I am, I've struggled for a long time, and I, and I will say that. So, just to be honest, and I've met with lots of people, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So we're gonna end that portion of the public hearing, and we're gonna invite everyone to stay as we go through the regular meeting, because at the end of the meeting, or closer to the end, that's when we'll vote. So we have a pretty extensive agenda, but we're gonna do our best to expedite that process, we can get to the, to the vote. So we're gonna go ahead, go ahead and start the regular session, so we're gonna call that to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Okay, we're gonna, everybody stands, we can pray, have a prayer. Councilman Bier, would you mind?
O heavenly Father, once again, we have gathered here, gathered together here to do the business of the city of Hammond. We pray, O heavenly Father, that we do everything in our power to educate, to make prosperity, and to make these citizens safe. We pray, O heavenly Father, that we listen to each other, that we respect one another. We come, O heavenly Father, thanking you for all that you do for these citizens. We pray for each and every one of them. We pray for those that are, for all of our elected officials. We pray for all of our first responders, our police and our fire department. We pray for our cities, we pray for our state, and we pray for this great nation. These are all blessings we ask in the name of your precious Son of Jesus. To God be the glory.
Amen. Okay, we're gonna ask all veterans and military to run a proper salute, and Councilman Hood, is he listening to the prayer?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any council reports? I know we had talked about turning in our goals for the year, but if we want to push that off for the next meeting, I'm okay with that, so we can get through, so I'm okay if we suspend that for tonight, but any other council reports that we have? Okay? Mayor, any reports from the mayor?
Well, if you've seen the news today, you've seen that our police chief, Jim Stewart, collaboratively with other departments, Attorney General, ATC, Homeland Security, TPSO, and the city of Hammond, arrested since January 11th, 2017 is when they started this, 84 people for drugs, a large amount of pounds of marijuana, outstanding warrants, counterfeiting ring was going on. So they did a really good job, and my hat goes off to Chief Stewart. That's what we hired him for, and he's out there in the community doing a good service for us. Also, we have a cleanup day Saturday, we're gonna meet at the African American Museum at 8 o'clock, any volunteers would like to come meet with us and help us clean up, we'd greatly appreciate it. Omega Parade is 6:30 Friday. We had a really good event with the after-school children riding with me on the southeastern fire truck for Christmas. We, I picked Amanda McDaniel is a facilitator coordinator at the after-school program at Michael Kenny Center, and I asked her to pick six kids who were top of the, of all the kids out there that had really done well. And they rode the float with me, I gave them a bunch of throws to throw, and it was an opportunity for them to do something probably that they may not be able to do again. So it was so good, and so, so well appreciated by the kids, that I told them, I said, "For Mardi Gras, we'll do the same thing." So in partnership with Big Bad Ben, we had to get more throws, because I never bought throws for that many kids before. So, so we're gonna have another six kids, not top of class, but kids that have been really trying hard, doing really well, so we're gonna have these children on the float. So they should have a great time. So if you would, come out and enjoy the parade this Friday, and I'll keep it short, Mr. President.
Okay. Just one thing, I do wanna, wanna make a comment on, but I guess we can wait until you have it announced, then, so I'll wait on that. Are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Okay. All right, let's go into old business, none, new business.
Minutes, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes for January 24th, 2017?
Two months.
Second.
Two seconds. All right?
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt. Motion approved.
Okay, no old business, let's go into new business.
Number one, a resolution to approve Kitchens Restaurant LLC located at 221 East Thomas Street.
Number one, a resolution to approve Kenjans Restaurant LLC located at two-two-one East Thomas Street, moving to two-hundred Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, to attain a high-low alcohol content permit.
Jenny?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Yeah. I need to amend this to say under conditions. Kenjans Restaurant LLC was approved for alcohol, high-low content, and does have, hold right now, an alcohol license at their current location. However, they are moving to a new location, and as long as it is zoned properly, then there's really no other thing that they have to meet. However, it is under new construction, and they are gonna have to get inspections. I do not have the inspections completed at this time, so I would like to add that it's under the condition that the inspections are approved.
Okay. Well, when we make the motion, if, if there's a motion to approve, we're just gonna include that subject to the appropriate inspections.
All right. Any, any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Okay, council, if we, if you would choose to approve this, or offer an amendment, please add that we will approve that with the pending conditions that Jenny just mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt. Motion approved.
Okay, so I, I am recommending that it be approved.
So that was the, that was the motion for the amendment? Or is that?
That was the motion.
Included, included.
So everything was included, okay. Okay, now, I do have, I do have someone here, I think, if she's still here.
Is that Blunt's better half?
This is his better half, so if you have any questions for her...
She's a baker. She's, she's the pastry.
I'm like, yeah, it's only Valentine's Day right now.
Save us a seat over there. I think you might get a few customers.
Well, I appreciate everybody understanding that we're under construction, and we're trying to get everything...
Just give us your name and your address.
Megan Kenchon.
And your address.
We're at two-twenty-one East Thomas, but we're moving to two-hundred Southwest Railroad Avenue.
Right. Well, we're excited for you guys, and we look forward to your new location.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Successful, successful business, okay. All right, let's go to, all right, number two?
Number two, a resolution to approve the appointment of Cyril Gagnier as the building official for the City of Hammond, with an annual salary of sixty-six thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars. Pay grade one thirty-one, step twenty-one, effective February tenth, two thousand seventeen. Ms. Loretta.
Good evening.
Good evening. Loretta?
Mr. President, the mayor, myself, Dr. Landrum, we interviewed a candidate that we have chosen for the building official. Everyone, some, mostly everyone knows him, Cyril Gagnier, C.C.
Is he here tonight?
Yes, he is. He, he was with the city previously for nine years, and after he left the city, after he retired, he's been busy, busy, busy. He had his own business, he was doing bank inspections, and what was interesting is that he co-founded a, a, what is it? A nonprofit business to rescue pets, particularly cats. So I thought that was adoring. But he is here, if you have any questions for him, please do so. C.C.?
I'd like to say something as well.
Sure, go ahead.
I've been a contractor for twenty-five years, and when I first started, Mr. C.C. was the building official. And I just wanna say that the qualities that he holds helped me, formed me as a contractor. Listening to me, guiding me, correcting me when I was going in the wrong direction, coming, going out of his way to go out to sites to show me what was and was not acceptable. So someone like this is the leader that we need in this department. I really would appreciate your approval tonight for his appointment.
Mr. C.C., would you like to make a comment? Is there your name and your, and your address before, please?
Cyril Gagnier, twenty-two oh-three West Church Street in Hammond. I've lived here a lot of years. I, I really think that the, one of the main reasons that I accepted Pete's offer was the fact I really do care about the city, and I really wanted to, to prosper, and it's a way I can pay back what the city gave me as a child. And I, really, I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay. Good. All right. Any questions from, from the council? It's a pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Right, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, C.C. Let's see, C.C., we'll see you tomorrow.
He's on vacation, he said. That's Vacation Day tomorrow. Take it Vacation Day. All right, Bobby, you might as well come on up, because I know you have a few... Happy Valentine's Day to you, Bobby.
Yeah. Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay. Number three, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at five-zero-nine Noah James Drive, ninety percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Jake D. Johnson. He tell Carol Regina Jones, two-nine-one-one Oliver Street, Bossier, Louisiana, seven-one-one-one-two. Mr. Bobby Mitchell.
I'd like to see if my newly-appointed building official wants to handle this. Great decision, great decision. Number three, eighty, ninety percent damage, five-oh-nine Noah James Drive. I did have a conversation with several of the property owners, and they're also in agreement that it would cost them astronomical amount of money to repair the property, so they're in favor of demolition. So we recommend demolition for five-oh-nine.
Any, any comments from the council, from the audience? Pleasure to counsel. Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at eight-zero-eight East Robinson Street, ninety-six percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Geraldine Hall, six-one-one-one-six Vining Road, Eight Meet, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-two-two.
Eight oh-eight East Robinson, ninety-six percent damage. Recommendation is to demolish.
Are they, any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Pleasure to counsel.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number five, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at nine-zero-three East Coleman Avenue, ninety-one percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Pearlie Hutton, Carol Zina Hayes, nine-one-zero East Coleman Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-one.
There were representatives here earlier. They had to leave. Those owners are in favor of demolition, nine-oh-three East Coleman, at ninety-one percent damage. We do recommend demolition. However, we would like to offer them additional two weeks from the thirty-day grace period. So we just give them forty-five days to demolish, extension of fifteen.
So they're gonna do it themselves?
Owner wants to tear it down themselves.
Okay.
They have the equipment to do so.
So we have to put that as, as an amendment, to extend it to forty-five days?
You don't really have to amend it. When you approve it, you can give the owner forty-five days to demolish.
Okay, so we, okay. Any questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel. With the...
With the twenty-five days to demolish, right.
Twenty-five to demolish. Can we get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at four-five-three-three-four Hoover Alley, ninety-five percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Senior May Williams, Carol Elma Johnson, P.O. Box five-zero-three, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-four.
Four-five-three-three-four Hoover's Alley, ninety-five percent damage. We do recommend demolition.
I have a question for you, Bobby.
Yes.
Do you like, do you live in, do you always spend all your time in District One?
I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
Do you spend all your time in District One? Is Councilman Blunt encouraging you to be over there all the time?
I think what's happened, four has been totally cleaned up, and so we're moving, moving forward to...
All right, I got you. Okay.
More needy areas.
All right, okay. Yeah, you may even do District Three as well. Okay. All right. Any questions from the council? Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Number seven, a resolution authorizing demolition of a property located at two-zero-nine Peach Street, eighty-seven percent damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Joandre, Carol Shakita Kelly, P.O. Box six-one-three, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-four.
Two-oh-nine Peach, recommending demolition, eighty-seven percent damage.
Questions from the council, from the audience? Pleasure to counsel.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Number eight, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at one-zero-zero-seven Barnido Lane, ninety-eight percent damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Helen Coleman, one-zero-zero-seven Barnido Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-one.
Ten-oh-seven Barnido Lane, ninety-eight percent damage. Recommendation is to demolish. District Three.
All right.
I call forth.
Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
Second.
Second. Second.
Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
He's in the restroom. I think he is.
Number nine, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at two-zero-zero-five Corbin Road, eighty-eight percent damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Edward Clyde Commons, six-three-nine Solomon Drive, Covington, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-three-three.
Eighty-eight percent damage for two thousand and five Corbin Road. Our recommendation is to demolish.
Pleasure to counsel.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt. Number ten, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at two-one-seven Scanlon Street, ninety-three percent damage located in Council District Four. The owner is Annie Richardson and M. Richardson Enterprises LLC, P.O. Box five-seven-eight Natol, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-five-one.
Is that on the corner of Church and Scanlon?
That is.
That's the house that we looked at a couple of years ago?
Gold house, correct. Terribly deteriorated, two thousand, two, two seventeen Scanlon, ninety-three percent damage, finally getting torn down. District number four.
Are we gonna demolish that, or are they taking care of that?
We'll do our normal process, thirty days. Do the recommendation of bids to licensed contractors. If the owners don't beat us there, we'll take care of it. Send them a bill.
Pleasure to counsel.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Last but not least, I believe, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at two-eight-zero-six West Church Street, ninety percent damage located in Council District Four. The owner is Doris Tate Aker, one-one-seven-zero-zero East Brickyard Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-zero-four-zero-one.
I spoke with representative of this property, Glenn Butler, twenty-eight oh-six West Church Street. There's a portion of the building that's recommending for, recommended for demolition, the west end of the building. I, I understand that there is a, a lease agreement, or purchase agreement, rather, for this property. The owner is requesting ninety days to do the transaction of sale. However, we do want to recommend demolition in the event that the property is not sold, that we won't have to return to the council for demolition recommendation.
So you're giving, you're going to give them regardless whether it's sold or not, ninety days, before, before the process starts, what you're saying?
Correct, because they, they submitted a letter, and I can read that letter.
You don't have to read the letter. If you, if you're, if you're recommending that, I mean, that's reasonable with me.
They've been cooperative. I think they were in communication with, with council member as well, and being a responsible owner, wanting to. It's, it would be a very expensive demolition, should we move forward.
So you're asking us to vote, if we're gonna vote for this, to, to extend it ninety days? And if not, if the, if the sale is not made, then you have...
We, we move without normal process, correct.
Okay. Any questions from, yes, question?
What if the sale is not made?
If the sale is not made...
I mean, what if the sale is made? Is the new owner responsible?
They incur, they incur the responsibility of the, the council's decision to demolish.
Yeah, so you basically give them ninety days, no matter who owns it. No matter who's buying it.
So ninety days is what we're looking at. So Councilman Hood, would you wanna add that to the...
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion to approve with a stipulation of ninety days to demolish.
Second. Turn your second there?
Thank you, Bobby.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Pretty quick, huh?
Yeah, thank you, man.
Enjoy your dinner.
Number twelve, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Tansville Parish Government and the City of Hammond for the purchase and installation of bus shelters and benches. Dr. Lacy Landry.
This is a grant that we...
I'm gonna take a break, so Janice is gonna fill in while I go.
Okay, you want me to wait until you come back?
If you want to, it's up to you guys, man. I won't take that long.
Okay.
I will say something about this, this item here. If you've noticed over the past few years, we had the bus stops with the advertisements, advertisements on it, which I have been running down since the day we put them up. This right here, as Lacy will describe, are grant funds that are helping us out. And we're gonna replace these with some nice benches that are more suitable for our downtown, for people's, for the aesthetic look that we really want downtown, so I think this is... Ma'am?
A shelter?
That's what I'm gonna explain.
And also shelters in areas where, you know, they're being used a lot. So over a period of time, hopefully, we'll get more shelters, but right now, we would really like, I would personally, and I think most people would agree, that we would like to get these other ones down. Their contract is up, they've been notified. We'll keep them on a month-to-month basis until we replace. We've been in touch with...
Go benches.
Go benches was the owner, but we've been in touch with, in touch with the council on aging, asking them what bus stops are truly used the most, and we're replacing those first. So this is something I think would be for the betterment of our community, what we really like to see.
Will they have tranches or something?
Yes. Could I present this, please? I can, I can really cover all this in the presentation. I really do have all these notes in the presentation, I promise. They're right here. We, this is a grant. This is basically part of the federal money that we receive, both to improve our roadways and to improve transit in Hammond. This happened when we became over twenty thousand with the census designation and whatnot, and with the Metropolitan Planning Organization. All of these funds funnel down to the Regional Planning Commission, and then we had to designate someone to be the designated recipient of all the transit funds. The parish in this case is the designated recipient, because they handle transit both inside the city limits of Hammond and Ponchatoula, and outside, all throughout the parish. So to keep that consistent, that's why this is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Hammond and the parish government. We, we received these funds, but they're kind of the holder of the funds. So we're seeking their permission to use the money that came down to Hammond to install ten permanent, so to speak, bus stops. Five of these will include shelters. The other five will include both a foundation with the thought that if they become viable for a shelter based on their usage, then we can have the, we already have the foundation poured, we can just add the shelter later. What we're requesting of the council tonight is permission to use up to ten thousand dollars out of the Grant Match Fund. In the agreement, it specifies that the federal funds cover eighty percent of the project cost, and the city provides twenty percent of the project cost. Right now, to establish these ten bus stops, which will include at... Right now, to establish these 10 bus stops, which will include at five of them, a shelter, bench, and trash receptacle, that, plus the additional five foundations and five benches, that will cover costs between $45,000 and $50,000 based on the cost estimates that we have. So, that's why we're asking for a match of up to $10,000 from the Grant Match Fund. If that somehow is exceeded, we will come back to you requesting permission for additional matching funds, but we actually believe we will be able to install these for far less than that.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience?
And I'll just say that the stops overall have been analyzed for their ridership over the last three years, so we're pretty confident that these are the highest-use spots.
You guys actually had, you explain to me the amount of, how involved the process was.
Correct. They have gone from 30 stops to 10 stops. The hope is to make the system far more efficient and to run the bus through the system with basically 20 to 30 minutes per route. Right now, it takes anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half for the route, which definitely diminishes ridership overall, and we've had a lot of people drop off because of that. We have worked consistently with the council on aging and they believe that everything that we're shifting will be in the best interest of the City of Hammond and its residents.
All right, thanks, Lacey.
Mr. President, I would just like to make a comment thanking the administration because I've had several constituents just beat me up over the years about those benches. So, I'm glad that we're moving toward something that's better and more aesthetically pleasing. So, thank you.
And given the topic of discussion tonight, they will match the same bench style and trash can style that we use both in downtown and in our parks, so they, and the shelter also looks very much like a historic Hammond shelter.
That is historic, okay. Well, that's good to know. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, number 13.
Number 13, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a intergovernmental agreement between the Tansville Parish School Board and the City of Hammond for the use of Rymer's Field. Mayor Pete Panapinto.
I had the privilege of going out for the ribbon cutting of the new basketball court out at Hammond High School. While I was there, I was talking to the baseball coach and he mentioned that their field wasn't ready. So, knowing that Rymer's Field was one of the first fields, I believe, that Hammond High used back in the day, I said, and our Parks and Grounds group, Carleese, keeps the place really pristine. I said, why don't you use Rymer's Field for your field until your field is ready? So, this is to enable them to use the field for practice and games. We've gone out there and we've done some little tweaking that they asked us to do. So, this is, this is one of those cooperative endeavor agreements that we're really proud to do because it's helping out our local high school.
Yep. Okay. Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion denied.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Okay, before we go into final adoptions, we are going again because we're talking, last we're going to take each ordinance separate so that we can vote on the ordinance. So, we will, we will take them in order from final adoption. Ordinance number one, you want to go ahead and read that?
Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt the recommendation of the zoning commission not to expand the Hammond Historic District.
And so, we're voting in this regard not to expand, to follow the recommendation of this, of the zoning commission, which is not to expand. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
I need some clarification.
So, we're voting, in this case, we're voting to deny the recommendation of the zoning commission. So, we vote in favor.
Basically rejecting the, rejecting the recommendation of the zoning commission.
Rejecting the recommendation.
They said, they said, don't expand.
Okay.
The motion is to reject that recommendation.
All right, so if you vote aye, you're voting...
Against the recommendation.
Against the recommendation. Right, so.
Jason Hood.
My turn?
No. Mike Williams.
No.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny, Johnny Blunt.
Okay, so the motion to deny has...
Meaning you've rejected the recommendation of the zoning commission not to expand.
Right. Okay. Item number two, I do want to, I do want to make a comment before we read that last one. If this ordinance passes, we need to, we wanted to factor in that there may be possibly a need for time, I think Molly Rickett made a comment towards it, getting the historic district ready to handle the new additional work. So, I would recommend that if we're going to pass this, if someone wants to amend, make an amendment, that will make the expansion effective July 1 of 2017. I think that would be appropriate for us to do that. Okay? Any questions from the council? Let's go ahead and read the, read the ordinance, please.
Final adoption of an ordinance to expand Historic District.
And which the effective date, councilman?
So, it'll be July 1, 2017, if we can get that as an amendment.